Six o'clock. Welcome, everyone. I will bring the meeting to order for the Citrus Heights Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, June tenth. Mr. Kinderwater, Commissioner Kinderwater, would you please lead us in the in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kinderwater.
President.
Commissioner Al Ravi.
President.
Commissioner Yusik.
President.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Here.
Vice Chair Flowers.
Present.
Chair Sheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
The next item is the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda is the minutes of May twenty-seventh meeting. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or changes to those minutes? Anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion for the to accept the consent agenda, please?
I move we accept the minutes of the last meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Motion pass. Item pass.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Next is public comment. Under Government Code, Section fifty-four ninety-five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the plant city planning commission, planning division, excuse me, and the applicant for the agenda item.
We have no comments.
Okay, thank you. So I will open the, no, no reason? Okay. Public hearing. Fifty-five twenty-five Sunrise Boulevard, QSR with drive-through presentation by Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commission. Allison here with the planning division to present this item to you. As mentioned, this is a quick serve restaurant proposed for five-five-two-five Sunrise Boulevard. This is a quick service restaurant. I'll refer to it throughout the presentation as QSR, just to make it a little bit easier. But this is at five-five-two-five Sunrise Boulevard, which is a site that we're familiar with. It's the existing Marie Callender's site that's been vacant for several years. So it's the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a new approximately five thousand square foot, a quick serve restaurant with drive-through services that will take its place. Have drive-through lanes and associated site improvements, landscaping, trash enclosures, new lighting, landscaping, and other outdoor seating and other items like that. At this time, we're not reviewing the design of the building, which is something we typically would do as the user has not been identified. So when the user is identified, we will then be reviewing the design plans for the project. So tonight, we're looking at the site layout and the operation of the facility. The zoning for this project is LC, but it's LC under a PD or plan development designation, not something that we're see too often. The LC zoning does allow restaurant uses, such as the existing restaurant was there and the ones in the surrounding area, and it does allow restaurants with drive-through services with this use permit that we're referring to. And as mentioned, this is part of an LC PD or a limited commercial under a planned development zoning. And so this PD zoning is called Sunrise Knoll. It was established by Sacramento County back in nineteen seventy-seven. Covers about a total of thirty-seven acres, which inclusive of this site and the sites adjacent to it, sites to the west and across Birdcage and up to those condominiums. So it covers a total of about thirty-seven acres. Within that total planned development area, there's a mix of zoning. There's the multifamily zoning. There is a BP zoning, which is your business professional, your office uses, and then this LC zone, which fronts along Sunrise Boulevard, covers the four parcels I have highlighted on the screen. The planned development, as I mentioned, we don't have too much of that property and you don't see it very often. We typically don't use a planned development zoning any longer, but the county used quite a bit of it. So this is a carryover. And today, through our zoning, we would call it a special planning area, so very similar type thing. And it does allow you to kind of have different development standards for an area than the standard zoning would allow. So allow some deviations from the zoning code through this planned development zone. And so in the case of this planned development, the Sunrise Knoll, it did require a fifty-foot setback along Sunrise Boulevard. So if you're driving that area, you can notice how much further back those buildings are. They're not right adjacent to Sunrise. That's because this plan, this was planned as part of the development back in the county, back from, as I mentioned, nineteen seventy-seven, that they would have this larger setback. Typically, today, if this was a straight LC zone, you'd have a twenty-foot setback. So those planned development standards are carried over into this project with a larger setback. It also had requirements that the parcels have common access, so they allow cross-access between parcels for conversing through this different buildings and to the restaurants and to the offices, as well as shared parking. In addition to the planned development zone, it is also in an overlay zone. So tonight, we have an LC zone under a planned development and then with an overlay zone on top of it. So I got you three different zoning designations. This overlay district was established by the city in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, and it really encompassed the marketplace area. And what it did is it looked at auto-intensive uses and felt this area is our commercial corridor. We were getting interest from car washes and from gas stations and very auto-intensive uses in that area. And so we did put an overlay zone on this area to prohibit certain auto uses. So it does have a standard zoning, but then certain uses are called out specifically as not permitted. So in the case of this one, it was those auto-intensive uses. And tonight's project is a restaurant with drive-through, which is not considered an auto-intensive use as far as the overlay zone. So the project was evaluated under some key provisions, not only the limited commercial zone with the planned development, the Sunrise Marketplace overlay district that we just talked about, but all other applicable zoning regulations that we have. So we looked at the site layout. We look at the setbacks, how they make sure they were consistent to that planned development. We looked at the design of the site plan, the queuing of the drive-through, the onsite circulation through this center, and then how it would move to the other businesses surrounding, and then, of course, landscaping. Here's the site proposal, how it would lay out. So remember, the existing building would be removed. The footprint shown in yellow, there would be the proposed five thousand square foot quick serve restaurant. It would include about twenty-two hundred square feet of indoor dining, has an outdoor patio, and then the double drive-through lanes. As you see shown here, you have two drive-through lanes, queuing around the building, traveling north, and then at the pickup window going to one lane. Circulation and queuing of the site, we did do a traffic impact study or a TIS to evaluate how the onsite circulation would flow, as well as the surrounding traffic. So Sunrise Boulevard and Uplands and the surrounding streets, how they might be impacted by a quick service restaurant. And to qualify that, so quick service restaurants could be a lot of different type of uses. So they could be an In-N-Out Burger, it could be a Chick-fil-A, or it could be something a lot less impactful. So when we did the traffic, the TIS, we did have them take the worst-case scenario, which would be like In-N-Out Burger or Chick-fil-A, to use that as an evaluation point. Because if you recall, we don't know who this user is going to be. The property owner will take the approvals and then go out to market and try to find the appropriate user. And so we did evaluate it for worst-case scenarios. So we did look at the traffic surrounding, onsite circulation, and the study did determine that the site could accommodate a heavy user, such as ones that we mentioned. The site layout does show the queuing, about five hundred and thirty feet, linear feet of queuing services that enter the drive-through lanes. Remember, it's two lanes, and then it goes around to the order window and then from the order, I mean, yeah, from the order menu board, and then to the pickup window. So that would allow twenty-one cars to back to stack from the point of ordering, back to the entrance, and then from the order menu to the pickup window, you get about another six or seven cars. So a total of twenty-seven cars are accommodated in this lane. And the TIS looked at several other users, ones that are in similar situations. I think I called out in the staff report where those locations were, but other similar fast food restaurants, and this queuing exceeded what any of those have and could accommodate. They did recommend through the study some additional pavement markings, as shown on this screen here, some more directional arrows, some keep-clear signage, so people going from, traveling north from the site, from maybe the adjacent restaurant parking lot up to this one, wouldn't be blocked off. So there's a keep-clear, and then the additional arrow striping should the lanes extend past the drive-through lane where they could wrap around there along the south. In addition, the TIS did look at the on-street traffic and found that, depending on the user, as we mentioned, this could be a user that could be impacted. We don't, we don't know what that would be like. But they did recommend extending the northbound turnpocket. Shown on the screen, there is intersection five, so Uplands Way at Sunrise. If you're traveling north and you're going to turn left to get onto Uplands and then travel in front of the existing restaurant to get to this, to the shaded area there where this restaurant would be, that turnpocket could use an extension, depending on the user. And because this, and so the applicant had agree, has agreed and planned to do that extension, but because it's Sunrise Boulevard, and we just don't know what this end user is going to be, we're not sure that that's going to be necessary. And so we have conditioned the project that we'll review this once the user is identified and operations start to see if that's necessary. We didn't want to disrupt Sunrise Boulevard. It was found not to be necessary. In addition, the site is going to be fully landscaped, so all new landscaping, more appropriate trees for the parking area, larger trees along Sunrise Boulevard, some focal point trees coming into the entrance of the site, and then a detention basin along the drive-through lane. One addition to note on this, the landscaping is, there is a condition of approval that it's going to require additional screening of that drive-through lane. It runs north and south along Sunrise, but we would, we'd need that more screen from the right-of-way. So in addition to the landscaping that's proposed around the drive-through lane, we are requiring a short wall, like we've commonly done in other drive-throughs. So it'll be a wall with additional landscaping in front of it. Keeps the view of the vehicles from Sunrise protected and then also ensures no headlights are going into any oncoming traffic. Just to recap some of the changes, or not changes, but some of the notable conditions of approval that are included in the staff report. This is a use permit, so it will allow the operation of a quick service restaurant, twenty-four-hour operation, according to the site plan as presented. But final design or elevations of the building will require approval through a design review permit that will be done at the time the user is identified. Should they stick to this similar site plan that we have presented and no significant changes, it would be a staff-level review. But should there be operational changes or they increase the building to over five thousand square feet, then that project will come back to you for review. We'll also need to review a final landscape plan, and we have conditioned it, I forgot to point that out. So along the southern property line, where this property adjoins the restaurant to the south, we are, we have asked for additional trees to be planted in that planter. So that is an addition in those conditions. The increased pavement markings is recommended in the TIS report or included as a condition of approval. The site plan also does show bike parking or a bike locker is required through codes. Now require this bike lockers. We have conditioned that to be inside the building. We've had a lot of issues with those being outside of a building, so they can incorporate that to the inside floor plan, so that's a condition of approval. And then the requirement for that turnpocket, we have put that on there that the applicant can bond for that, which means they would secure a bond for the cost of those improvements. And we will hold on to that until such time it's warranted if that work is needed. And then if it's needed, that will cover the improvements. If it's not needed, then the bond would be returned. The project was reviewed for consistency to the city's general plan. Several policies and goals, as listed on the screen here, support this project, promoting commercial development that enhances, enhances the appearance and functionality of commercial corridors, specifically Sunrise Boulevard. Revitalize existing or underutilized commercial sites, which we know this certainly is, has been a vacant, underutilized site for a long time. Support the retention, expansion, attraction of businesses. This will be a new restaurant in the area. And ensure the site's access and circulation, parking, there's no conflicts, which we have went over that already, and really promote the landscaping and the site design. And I think they've presented a really good project with adequate landscaping. Some of the areas are even exceeding our shading requirements. And I'll present a nice frontage along Sunrise Boulevard. The project was reviewed for environmental review under SEQA. It does qualify for an exemption under Class thirty-two, which is the infill exemption. That exemption is given to projects that are consistent with the general plan, the zoning. In this case, it is, the general plan designation is general commercial, which is consistent for restaurants. The LC zoning PD, which we talked about, is consistent with that, as well as consistent with the Sunrise Marketplace overlay. The site, other qualifications for that exemption is it's in city limits, which we know that it is, it's under five acres, and it's surrounded by urban uses. And there's no insignificant impacts to traffic noise and air, as we presented in those technical studies with the report. It's fully serviced with utilities and public services, and there's no sensitive habitat. Therefore, it does qualify for the exemption. A number of efforts of public outreach were completed for this project. As always, when we receive a development application, we post the site with a sign, allowing the public to know that we're reviewing the application and informing them of how to find more, find out more about the project. So that sign has been posted since this project was received in January. We have, it is listed on the city's projects viewer, which is an online mapping tool that we have, where we list all of our active projects, projects going through the review process, and then once they're completed and approved, they do stay on that viewer. So that allows the public to know what is happening. We do notify our neighborhood areas, the Sunrise Marketplace, and other stakeholders of the application. And then we do, when hearing is scheduled, publish in the newspaper. To review the project, it's consistent with the general plan and zoning code. It's located in our established commercial corridor. It meets all the required development standards. It's compatible with the surrounding uses. It is conditioned to avoid any impacts to public health, safety, or welfare. Qualifies for that SEQA exemption as mentioned. Therefore, staff is recommending approval based upon the findings listed in your staff report. And then I have the motions here when you're ready, but I'm not happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Utzig.
Does the east-west driveway, are you able to make a left turn into that driveway from northbound Sunrise?
Going north on Sunrise, you'd have to go up to Alta Sunrise and make a U-turn. And I also did forget to mention, it's kind of cut off on this screen. When your point, when you're coming southbound on Sunrise, you would turn right into the project. And then if you're exiting the project at Sunrise, at that Sunrise driveway, you could only turn right. So it's right-in, right-out only. Otherwise, if you're traveling northbound on Sunrise, you would turn Uplands before the project and then turn into that driveway and drive in front of that other existing restaurant, then to get to this location. And one other thing, even though I have tiny notes in there, so I wouldn't forget to say it, I did have an error in the staff report that I saw today on page five. It talks about this intersection turnpocket, and it said the southbound turnpocket, which obviously it should be the northbound turnpocket. So just want to make that, make that note.
Any other commissioners?
Allison, when I reviewed this, and then you've mentioned it a couple of times, the turnpocket, and isn't it simply lane striping? Or it sounds like it's costly if a bond has to be put forth.
It would be extending the turn lane as well, so the medium would have to be altered, too. I'm looking at my traffic friends here with me.
Allison, what about, I looked at the site plan, and I didn't see any emergency escape lane on the drive-through, which we have noticed those been developed around other cities, around Citrus Heights. And I highly recommend the developer to think of adding an emergency escape lane. I personally got sick in a drive-through, and I almost fainted once, and people would not move away. So it is a code by the city of Sacramento. All the drive-throughs with that amount of stackable cars need an emergency escape lane. So I would put that for recommendation. Also, for the screening of the drive-through is a great idea. I drove by the side the other day, and it's higher grade than Sunrise. I would recommend some sort of, who doesn't like plants? But I would recommend some sort of architectural folly, kind of to highlight that area.
Anyone else?
I do have a question, Allison. The, the bike lockers on the inside of the building.
It's generally just a room, like a little closet?
Yeah, I, I'm just surprised to be bringing bikes into a restaurant area or, you know, quick, I realize quick serve, but I'm just, I don't know, I.
Most not necessarily inside the built, inside the restaurant. It could be accessed from the outside of the building, so.
Okay. Okay, so the bike lockers are on the side, but the access.
Probably misdescribed it. It's part of the building, not necessarily inside the restaurant.
I, I understand. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, with no other questions, we do have a speaker, so I'll, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Where does this concept come from, the bike lockers? I'd never heard of it before. Is it a state?
It is a requirement of the building code that bike lockers are provided. And so they have to, they have to incorporate that into the project. One alternative that we can do is move them to the inside instead of outside, which over time when they've been outside, they've been quite an issue. We even have some here on our campus that have had to take different measures. So they're preferred to be inside.
All right. With that, I see we, I have one speaker card, so I'll open the public comment. Kathy Lynn Carpenter.
The applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant is also here.
All right.
If you'd like to call.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak at all? What the heck?
I'm Steve Patterson. I believe I'm kind of considered a stakeholder in Citrus Heights. I've been here since the inception of the city back in nineteen ninety-eight. I own three properties here. I've served on the Sunrise Marketplace Board to try to help guide development in the area in a positive way. I was interviewed for the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, and they took a lot of my ideas in there. This particular project, it's, I go up and down Sunrise a lot because of the properties we have. And it's a understanding real estate and what's happening with dining, and a lot of it was a result of what happened with COVID, is that people's dining habits have changed. And whether people like it or not, people are driving by, sit-down restaurants on their way to drive-through restaurants. Drive-through restaurants have really evolved over the years. Chick-fil-A's and In-N-Out Burgers have really kind of been the innovators of speeding up the wait time. When there was all that commotion about the Raising Cane, I went over during a dinnertime and a lunchtime. And when I went over at lunchtime, I got into the queue lane, and it took ten minutes to get my order. And then when I got to the window, it took another three minutes, I waited for them to hand it to me. And so I asked myself, okay, and I had my iPhone timer going. So I said, there must be a reason. So I drove into Hobby Lobby, and I sat there and I thought about it. I says, the design of the drive-through is the problem. And that's what causes the delay, because when you make the order, you've got to give the kitchen enough time to fill the order, so you're not waiting at the window. Well, In-N-Out, Chick-fil-A, and maybe a few others, they've kind of recognized that, and that's why they have the guys out there with the iPads, and you can tap and pay, and they move it. Most In-N-Outs and Chick-fil-A's, believe it or not, as many cars you see out there, you're in and out of there in less than eight minutes. And I've run around and tested a different ones myself, like there's one over off of, in North Sacramento, in Natomas. So I was coming back from San Francisco one day, and I thought, you know, I'm just going to check it out. So I looked at a car that was last in line. It was a Toyota pickup truck, and I went in and made my order. And when I was leaving, that truck was already going, it was gone. So they really give priority to the drive-throughs. As far as what I think is going to happen here, I think it's going to really be an asset to that restaurant corridor, because it's going to clean it up, it's going to be new. I think the citizens will be receptive to a Chick-fil-A or something of a quality type. And part of why I wanted to have the, the drive-through approved is so that I can control who the tenant ends up being. Because when you normally go through a drive-through procedure, the tenant is driving the process, and then you've got the tail wagging the dog. And because I have an investment in this community, I've been here for twenty-seven years, I don't live here, but I feel like I do, I wanted to make sure that we do the right thing at that location. So I'll answer any questions if I didn't cover it all.
Commissioners? No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Kathy Lynn.
Good evening, everybody. That's probably not necessary, I wasn't sure what the environment would be like tonight. But I did want to say, from the Sunrise Marketplaces' point of view, and also because Steve won't say it himself, he, we have, as you know, several shopping centers, a little over three hundred businesses, and Steve is one of our best landlords. He's really good, and they aren't all, you know, they just aren't. He's really good about taking care of his properties. The landscaping, the buildings, you know, are always painted if need be. They're very quick to call us and our porter to come over to help out if there's extra graffiti or things, or camps or things have to be cleaned up. So he, he's an excellent landlord. I've been working with Steve for probably nearly twenty years. I've been at the marketplace for twenty-six years. I also wanted to say that I worked with the current owner for probably five years trying to find a sit-down restaurant, and we went through three brokers, good brokers, really good brokers in the industry, and we just couldn't do it. And at this time, we were pretty desperate, because they had the trifecta of the Boston pizzas being closed, Habachi Grill wasn't there yet, had been closed a long time, and this was closed. And it was really eating up all our resources, all of our security and porter services. Do you want to throw just a couple pictures up? I was going to show you a couple. I was going to show you a couple of pictures of what it's like at Marie Callender's and why we're anxious to get something in there. These, I have hundreds of pictures of Marie Callender's. These are just a very few of kind of what goes on there. We had overnight security, but our grant ran out May 31st, so we no longer have overnight security. Some of our businesses do, some of our centers do. Steve is one who does have security at night. The current owner does not have security at Marie Callender's, but Steve does. And that would be super helpful in keeping things okay at that area. And I think the only other thing, oh, I was just going to say a thing about bike lockers. I know it's a code, but bike lockers are just a place for the homeless to break into. And so I think anything like that, storage units, trash enclosures, I don't care what you do, I don't care what you put on them, they're all targets. So I think having it inside is going to be a really good idea. So anyway, I encourage you to vote for it, and I know you'll be really happy with Steve and what he's going to do there. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have none.
Close the public comment. Any other, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I'll take motions.
Actually, I'd just like to make a comment. Steve, thank you for that presentation. And I've also been a resident of Citrus Heights for a very long time. And way back when Marie Callender's was frequented regularly by my parents and I. So it's very sad to see it go, and I was very hopeful that we would get some sort of higher-end dining experience there. But I, I am also attuned to the dining habits of the world these days. And I know that fast-serve restaurants seem to be a thing that this next generation relies on. And so I am really excited to see this come forward. I think it's, in my opinion, a very, very good alternative. And, and I love to see, see the beautification of that spot. So I, I just want you to know that I think it's a great addition and, and an option, rather than that restaurant that I'm dying for in Citrus Heights. I'm sure one of them's going to come someday, but, but I understand, I think it's a great alternative, so thank you for that.
I just have one, one comment also. I just urge you to think about In-N-Out Burger as opposed to Chick-fil-A.
That's my comment. And you, and one else want to advocate for a restaurant? All right, thank you.
Steve, I appreciate your comments. I, I was disappointed when Lyons failed. Once again, I'm, I'm impressed with the presentation from Allison and all the hard work from the city. But I was disappointed about Lyons, I don't know that anyone has a comment on it, but there, there was a very fine sit-down restaurant.
All right, I think that's it. Do I have any, anyone that wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we find the proposed development of the quick-serve restaurant with the drive-through is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, under Section 15332 of California Environmental Quality Act, infill exemption clause 32. And may I make both motions, Ryan?
Okay.
Pardon? One at a time.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Usik.
Agree.
Commissioner Al Rawi.
Agree.
Commissioner Kinderwater.
Agreed.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Flowers.
Aye.
Chair Sheeler.
Aye.
Motion pass.
And I'll make a, a motion that we approve a use permit, file number PLN 2501, for the proposed quick-service restaurant with the drive-through service located at 5525 Sunrise Boulevard, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and conditions of approval provided in attachment one.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Flowers, seconded by Commissioner Van Duker.
Commissioner Usik.
Agree.
Commissioner Al Rawi.
Aye.
Commissioner Kinderwater.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Flowers.
Aye.
Chair Sheeler.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filling, by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees of $250 with the city clerk not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item.
That is general correspondence and presentations from city staff at this time. Casey, do you have anything?
Allison, did you have something? So it looks like we're not going to have planning commission meetings in the immediate future, but that means you have some free time, just to keep an eye out. We have some city events coming forward, we have the City Scoop event series this summer. We also have Stars and Stripes on June 28th, so we hope to see you at those events, and hope you all have a great summer.
Very good, thank you. With that, I will call this meeting adjourned, thank you.
Can we note the time, please?
Uh, it is 6:35.
Thank you.